Midland County Border Commissioners meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. Denise, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Toiliger.
Here.
Geisler.
Here.
Dorian Smith. Chairman Bone.
Here. And Commissioner Toiliger, will you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
Heavenly Father, we seek blessings on the task before us today. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I don't know.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for March 21st and April 11th, 2023.
Move to approve the minutes.
Support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will approve the minutes and move on to the acceptance of the bills.
Properly addressed general bank claims approved in the amount of, for the weeks of February 13th through the 17th, $2,472,149.10. Total general fund expenditures, $81,655.88. Properly addressed general bank claims approved for the weeks February 20th through 24th, $305,395.90. Total general fund expenditures, $89,184.1. Properly addressed general bank claims approved for the weeks February 27th through March 3rd, $1,725,438.74. Total general fund expenditures, $89,251.20.
Mr. Dorian.
Mr. Chairman, support the claims, move to approve the claims. Sorry, I'm a little rattled today.
That's okay. That's okay. Do we have support? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will approve and pay the bills, and we are going to move on to the special program of the day, which is a presentation on the Camp Grayling proposed expansion by Mike McNamara, retired lieutenant colonel with Camp Grayling. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, sir. I have a large map and some pictures that I'm sending around, and my name is Mike McNamara. I'm from Grayling. I was born and raised there. I'm second generation full-time National Guardsman. My dad also retired as a full-time colonel from the Guard. My last position, eight years ago, I was deputy post commander and retired. I'm here today and appreciate you guys' time. I'm here today to brief you on a proposed expansion from the National Guard for 163,000 additional acres on top of the 147,000 acres that they currently control and some might possess. They're public lands. They belong to the people of the state of Michigan, and I wanted to at least inform you and give you a quick briefing on what their proposal is, and obviously, I'm an opponent of the proposal, and for the fact that, there's a lot of facts, and we'll get into those. My whole life, my whole adult life, I was in the National Guard, and I was an advocate, whether I was a full-time maintenance and logistics guy, or I was a combat advisor in Iraq, or I was a deputy post commander at Camp Grayling. I was a huge advocate, advocate and proponent on Camp Grayling and trying to show people and bring people to the community to use those training grounds. But this expansion isn't about protecting soldiers or giving them better opportunities to train. It's been told that as a story, as a, as a marketing plan, but this Camp Grayling expansion and these 163,000 acres of state land, public land, isn't about taking care of soldiers and training soldiers, in my opinion. We have not been shown one iota, one piece of evidence, not one DOD study, Department of Defense study, not one Department of Army regulation, technical manual, field manual, any kind of requirement that they need this additional land, that the Guard doesn't need it. There's some to, some more to that. The Guard, and your, your read ahead packets, if you happen to see those, there was a D Business Magazine article. That D Business Magazine article out of Detroit, the May-June edition of 2022, talked about the adjutant general, Paul Rogers, and the camp commander, Scott Myers, and were boasting, bragging, talking about the abundance of land that they currently have, and that since they've rebranded and remarketed Camp Grayling, that their phone has been ringing off the hook by defense contractors able to come to Camp Grayling, circumvent the traditional testing procedures that would be done at a proving ground or that would be done at an Army test facility. No one looking over their shoulders, and their phone has been ringing off the hook to get access to our public lands and use them for weapon testing, development, and research. They boasted about, quoted, renting the land, leasing the land for the disgustingly low rate of $150 a day for 3,000 acres. So one would make, one reader would read that and say, if they have an abundance of land and they're bragging about it, and they're renting, leasing state land for the disgustingly inexpensive rate of $150 a day, it sure seems like, it sure seems like they already have enough land. And other, and I've attended dozens of public meetings where the camp and the DNR have spoken, and they said, well, we need this for electromagnetic warfare, and they try to play on the heartstrings and the emotions of the public. And when lots of questions were asked, or quite hard questions were asked, and no answers from the DNR, the district manager, or the National Guard post commander at Camp Grayling, Colonel Myers, when those answers weren't readily available by them, they switched to, if you're not with us, then you're against a soldier, or we're in a, you know, we're in a, we're in the, we're in the market of preventing our soldiers being bloodied, or if you aren't with us, then you're un-American. And that's really kind of shameful as a combat veteran who didn't see another American for 11 months when I was in Iraq, other than my small eight-man team. You know, those are just shameful, shameful tactics. Kind of got off track a little bit, but all the answers we've gotten have been vague or very obscure. There's nothing definitive that would show why they need another 163,000 acres of, of state land. Another, another good point to bring out right now is, is the fact that county and township elected officials in the directly impacted area, the majority of them were not contacted, were not apprised, were not even briefed on what the proposal really was. Now, I sat in a meeting at Bear Lake Township, and several of the board members and county commissioners happened to be in that meeting at Bear Lake Township, where the post commander said, I've talked to everybody, and everybody, every elect official's all on board. The Bear Lake Chair, or the Calcasas County Chair stood up and said, I'm so-and-so, I'm the chairperson for the county board, you haven't talked to me, you haven't talked to any of the other board members of Calcasas County, and they're like, oh, we probably did a bad job about talking about that, then, I guess. That was the answer, and that was almost quoted. Again, there's been no study to validate this land. There's too many vague answers. The industry, industrial partners using state land to earn profits or test equipment, or we don't know what the whole background is on whether it be electromagnetic equipment. When I passed the Ramada Inn last night in Grayling, there was a ton of contractors there that had all kind of electronic devices and electronic emblems and names on their vehicles. I didn't, I didn't stop and take pictures. I'm not a Snoopy guy. I don't think there's a conspiracy, but they're, they're using that land, and they're renting that land right now, currently, current 147,000 acres. So if they have enough land to do that, they have enough land to train our soldiers with 147,000. And why is this a big deal to Midland County? As you see that map, that map has grown. Bay County actually votes tomorrow. Not that that's super important to you, but just so you know, Bay County is voting on a resolution tomorrow. We've gotten a couple other Tuscola and Sanalac counties in the thumb. We have Roscommon all the way to the bridge, all the way north to the bridge, with resolutions opposing that. Their handouts are a little old, like a week old. There's actually 59 resolutions in the hand right now. I think your handout says 56. You know, how it impacts probably Midland County a little bit, there's also another move to expand the airspace. That's why those thumb counties really jumped on board. The airspace, that's a whole different, different animal, a whole different proposal, but the airspace is, there's move the foot to expand the airspace as well. I guess, I guess my point is, we don't know what any of this electronic warfare really is going to do to our people, our livestock, our public lands, our water systems, and we can talk about that just for real, real quick. I was born and raised in Grayling. I live right behind the Grayling Army Airfield. Didn't know it, but my water was poisoned for several years, at least, at least a year the Guard knew and never said anything. It was poisoned by that PFOS AFF foam. I lost two bird dogs, house dogs, to kidney failure, and I thought, what is going on? There happens to be some significant cancer rates in my neighborhood as well, but it's all based on that PFOS water contamination, which you guys probably are aware because we're in a, we're in a town that does chemicals. But I guess my point is, they have done nothing, and I said on the Restoration Advisory Board in the county, they've done nothing about the cleanup of that PFOS water contamination yet. It's been six and a half, seven years. You know, I have a whole house system, but they've done nothing. So their environmental background and their environmental, environmental history shows that, that they're not very reactive to it. They talk about it a lot, but they don't do much about it. I guess, at this point, I could go on, and I could tell the people on Zoom, and I could tell the commissioners, that we have a Facebook page with 7,500 listeners, 7,500 followers. Facebook is Facebook, but there's 7,500 people that oppose the Camp Grayling expansion. They make their, they wrote tens of thousands of letters to the governor's office and the director of the DNR, Shannon Lott, opposing this, this expansion. We're just trying to get the thumb and mid-Michigan area to join, join on board with the opposition because, a lot of reasons, obviously, but one of the biggest reasons, you know, why does it care, why do people in Midland County probably care? I would think that, you know, the Roscommon Crawford area, Calcasas, is their first access to state recreational public lands. Not a lot of state lands in the thumb and, and central Michigan, but that's the first chance that folks in Midland get to hit public land, and then if they go up there once or twice, and the trails are blocked, there's been more miles of fence and more miles of gates put in just to limit public access to our public lands. That's their first access. So that's why I think Midland County's residents and taxpayers probably care. I could write a MBA thesis on about four aspects of this and probably still find three or four more topics to pick from. I know your time is super valuable. I know that you guys have other things to deal with, I'll call it real or county business, but I really wanted to thank you for hearing me. I'll stay for the whole meeting. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer if that's permissible.
Commissioner Dorian.
Appreciate you being here today, Mike, and presenting to us on this topic. However, what is this decision to expand or stay the same, does that not solely rest with our governor?
It solely rests by statute with the director of the DNR, but as you know, she is appointed by the governor. So to answer your question, yes-ish.
But that's not Liesel anymore, is it not?
What's that?
It's not Liesel Clark anymore? Hasn't she moved on?
I don't know who Liesel Clark is, sir.
She's the Eagle Director.
That would be the DEQ Eagle. It rests with the DNR Director, Shannon Lott. It was Dan Eichinger. He was ready to make a decision, and he was moved over to Eagle. Can I answer your question, sir?
But this is, this is, what I'm saying is that this is at the, at the gubernatorial level and not the county level. That's just the question I'm asking, the point I'm making.
It's at the cabinet member, you know, the DNR Director, yes, sir.
The administrative level.
But I will tell you that our, and governors put a tat, one of her senior executives that works in her office, she put him on with us to get a feel, and other documents and other word we're getting out of the governor's office is, you guys are making a difference. These resolutions are making the governor listen, because if not, she'd already made the decision. So these, these resolutions are making a difference, and I wouldn't, I have 2,400 hours in this, and I wouldn't be spinning my wheels if I didn't think it was important. And just because it's important to me doesn't mean it's important to you, but, yes, sir.
But I've been to Camp Grayling probably three times for the review, the spring review. It was kind of a graduation ceremony type deal. The, I can't think of what the official term for it is, but I've been there.
Yeah.
I've been to Camp Grayling more than once, for what it's worth.
Commissioner Snyder.
This might be a question for you or Jessica, so I don't see this resolution our, our agenda. Are we just listening to the presentation today?
We're listening to the presentation.
And not considering it today?
I have a reservation.
We're not going to act on anything today. Question, I think I know the answer, but one is, I think it's going to infringe on a lot of people's hunting rights.
Yes, sir.
Correct? People that use ORVs, people that use snowmobiles, a lot of people that count on that land. Correct? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
It's going to fringe on all those people.
And I'll give you some examples. The Guard will say, the Guard will say, it's not going to change, you're still going to be able to use, you're still going to be able to use the land, and you're still going to be able to have access. Nothing's going to change, we're only going to, but then on the other side of the breath, it's going to be, we're turning this into a full-time, year-round, four seasons training event. We're going to give you deer season, rifle deer season. Other than that, it's all, it's all up in the air. And I can show you hundreds and hundreds of red ORV sticker signs that say no ORVs because it's Guard property now, even though it's still public land. So yes, sir, it's going to fringe on a lot of stuff. I can show you gate, I can show you back in 1984 when they, when the Guard was given another 50,000 acres, that there are lakes that are fenced in now, there are gates that are block off tons and tons of access. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any, yes, Commissioner Snyder.
I have one more question. When are they making this decision?
That's a million dollar question, ma'am. That was six months ago. Camp Grayling already had banners made, signs made during Northern Strike last year, was going to announce that they were going to slam this whole project through in 30-day public comment, and after that, from June 9th to July 9th, and after that, beginning August, right before Northern Strike, big training exercise, they were going to have a big party and claim that they, they have almost additional 250, 50 more mile, square miles of land. So to answer your question, Director Lott told our state representatives almost two months ago that a decision and a press release would be coming out in seven to 10 days, and that was almost two months ago.
Wow, okay.
And, and one thing I did, I did miss, I'll pass around some pictures, just real quick. These pictures of, some are of my dog, not my dog, my buddy's dogs that got tangled up in Constantina wire, that by the lease standards today, lease standards today, those Constantina wire, razor wire is not supposed to be left out, or that's a reason to lose the lease. There's also pictures of their, of rubber rafts, guys in combat gear floating down the river in non-training area, people's front yards. There's pictures of the Guard continually breaking the good neighbor policies, driving military vehicles up and down special assessed roads, blacktop roads, and Grayling, that's a big deal because we all got to pay, private property owners got to pay for that. Big signs that say no military vehicles, they're parked right next to it, driving right past it. They can't manage the land that they currently have, and I want, I think it's important for you to see those, those pictures. I can show you pictures in there that also, where they leave brass, expended brass and ammo, shooting blanks up and down county maintained roads. Everybody's tires are getting punctured. So if they can't take care of what they have, why would we give them more? To answer your question, sir, it is made at the governor's level, at, at the cabinet level, governor's level, but these resolutions are gaining traction and making the governor and the director listen, or this decision would have been made months and months ago if it wasn't for some, some concerned citizens. And the last thing I'll say, and I appreciate your time, again, I know you're valuable, is I, if I thought for one minute, as a combat veteran that didn't see another American for months in Iraq, if I thought this would save one soldier's life, I'd be all behind it. But it is saying about that, it's all about putting stars on helmets, it's all about career progression, it's all about legacy building, and it's all about, potentially about contractor use and taking care of buddies from the general's old job when he was the director of a big research and development federal organization. Thank you for your time, and I'll be here all day if you have any more questions.
Thank you, Mike. Kevin, I understand.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation.
So that brings us now to a public comment. Is there any public comment today? If there is, please come forward, state your name and address, and three minutes or less, please. Let's see, we've got a tie.
You're next, Yvonne, I guess.
My name is Nola Knight. I was born and raised in Midland County. My family now lives in Calcasas County. My concern is the health and well-being of the children and our grandchildren. I have gone to numerous meetings where they talk about experimental weapons, and it's unknown. They don't know what's going to happen. They won't tell us what weapons they're going to use. They just say, we're going to have these people come in, these contractors, they're going to test their experimental weapons, don't know what's going to happen to the water, to the air. It's about our children and our grandchildren. We don't want our children and our grandchildren growing up next to an experimental weapon zone. We don't want them to go on a school bus through an experimental weapon zone because 72, they want both sides of 72 between our area and Grayling. Everybody that comes up to Traverse City usually goes through 72 from Grayling to Calcasas to Traverse City. That will be an experimental weapon zone. I have spoken personally to Captain Layton in the National Guards. They won't tell us a lot about experimental weapons, but he did tell me a little bit about electronic weapons and cyber weapons. They're going to try to destroy communications. It's to disrupt communications. And he did specifically say cell phones. So I have a heart monitor. That heart monitor sends information to my cellphone. My cellphone sends that to the medical center. I have friends who have different medical equipment that also sends messages to their cell phones. They have pacemakers, and I said, what is going to happen to all of that if you're disrupting the cellphone signals? Well, they don't think it's going to do anything, but these are experimental weapons, and this is our life. If they turn the experimental weapon on and they're disrupting the cell phones, and your next door neighbor is having a heart attack or their house is on fire, we live out in the country. We have no way of calling to get help. Some would have to drive 15 miles into town to let them know that we have a medical emergency so they could send an ambulance out. The big thing is...
Mr. Blazer, are you keeping track of time?
I think we have a little bit longer.
Okay.
The big thing is, the DNR told us at a meeting, once the Guards get this property, they have no control over what the Guards do there. I spoke to the Assistant Director of the DNR at a meeting three weeks ago, and he told me and my husband, we don't really understand what they're going to be doing on that land. Both the DNRs don't know what they're going to be doing on it, and once they get it, they can't do anything about it. We do not want to live in an experimental weapon zone. We do not want Holton Lake all the way up, almost to the bridge, to become an experimental weapon zone. My concern is for the people, but for the children and the grandchildren. I don't think anybody here wants their children or grandchildren living next to an experimental weapon zone when nobody knows what they're going to be doing, and we have to drive right through it every day to go to town. I really appreciate you considering this, and it's very personal to us.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Jessica. Yvonne, next, public comment, please.
Three minutes.
Yep, three minutes. Name and address.
Good morning.
Good morning, Yvonne.
Good morning.
Good morning, Yvonne Corbett. I live at 16 West Laporte Road, it's in Porter Township, Midland County. First of all, I want to thank each one of you for supporting me for the last 25 years, and this is it, guys. I told you last time I wasn't coming back, and I want to thank you all for supporting me. It's been a great experience not only knowing you, but also knowing the people that I have come in contact with, and I appreciate that. Today, I am back here to support the people that have applied for the positions at Region Seven. Jeff Malincoat is here, and he has applied for the board, and I appreciate him doing this because we don't have that many volunteers that want to join our group. It's a meeting that takes place in Bay City, and many do not want to make that trip. We have, both Gaye and I have worked hard to find people who will even consider this, so we really appreciate Jeff coming, and he'll give you an update on what he has. He's an attorney here in Midland County. Our second person is Jim Peck, and he's with the, has applied for the advisory board. Jim and his wife Irene Oliver Peck have been very active in Mount Haley, and Jim has been delivering meals on wheels for two counties, I think you told me, Jim, this morning. So he's very familiar with the seniors. His, his heart is with the seniors in Midland County, and he also has attended many of the meal sites. So both of them, I feel, are excellent people to represent Midland County with Region Seven. And Gaye, I appreciate all your help too, because it's been an ongoing thing for a year. So I thank you so much for everything. Best wishes for you, and I cannot tell you how much I appreciate you people running for Commissioner. I've been there, the work is difficult, and it's long hours, and I appreciate each one of you. Thank you so much.
And we appreciate you.
Exactly. That's what I was just going to say. We appreciate you. Thank you for all you've done. Is there any other public comment today?
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Jeff G O F F Malincoat. As Yvonne said, I am an attorney, I, in the area, just down the road. I live in Sanford, Michigan, and I've applied for the Board of Directors for the Region Seven Area Agency on Aging. My practice, actually my entire legal career, even before I opened my own practice, focused primarily on elder law and estate planning. So I've worked in the advocacy area for senior citizens for quite some time. It's what, when I saw there was a list of openings, I took a look at the list to see if there's anything that I thought I could provide value to, and it's something that I spend every single day immersed in, and so I understand the, the needs of caregivers, of those folks who require care, the applicants and the, the clients of Region Seven, and as well as a lot of needs that we have in the area. It is, it's a growing population, and their needs are going to continue to evolve and grow, and Region Seven does some amazing things. Primarily where I've worked with them is the waiver program, which is a wonderful government program that actually saves the government money, allows seniors to remain in their homes longer, and increases their independence, which is something we all seek, seek to achieve for that particular group. But I'm happy to answer any questions afterwards. I was planning to bring cards if anyone wanted to contact me, and I usually have business cards coming out of my ears, it seems like when I least need them, but now that I needed them, I didn't have them, but I'm happy to talk to anyone and answer any questions afterwards.
Commissioner Toiliger.
Yeah, you can just leave your contact information with Jessica and...
I believe she has it. We've been in communication.
Yeah, and so we'll be able to contact you through her, or I can always call Yvonne.
Yes, who I've known since I was a teenager.
Or I'll just be at some of the meetings. That's one of my appointments, so.
Oh, okay. Terrific.
I'm your contact.
Well, good. Maybe I could, because if I approved, I could probably use some guidance as we begin.
Appreciate Jeff. Thank you.
Take care. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
Hi, Kathy Brainerd. I live in Bay County, and I'm working on the expansion, I don't want to worry you out, but I just want to emphasize again that this isn't an anti, this is not an anti-military opposition, this is an anti-expansion opposition. As Mike said, that we do support our troops, and my husband and I have a cabin on the north branch of the Asabo River. It's in close proximity to the bombing range, so we hear and we feel the bombs as they drop. We hear and we see the planes flying low overhead. The noise factor during training is significant, but we accept it. We accept it because it's our duty as citizens to, to train our troops. We accept the current level of training with Camp Grayling, but the need for the additional land is what we question. And numerous times in the question and answer sessions, um, where the DNR and the camp at Commander was present, Colonel Myers repeatedly would say, do we currently use all of the land that we currently have? No, we don't. So that's the question we ask. You're not using all the land you currently have, so why do you need the extra 162,000 acres? And we haven't received a verifiable reason. Um, they, up 100% of the jurisdictions, townships, counties, road commissions within the expansion area have written resolutions of opposition, 100%, and still the DNR and governor are going forward looking at this. That's another reason why we're coming out of the expansion area and coming to the counties at large, because numbers make a difference, and that's why we're getting the attention in Lansing now because of that. So again, thank you for your time, and just, we want to keep Michigan pure Michigan, like it's being advertised. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Morning, Mr. ... My name is Stephen Heater. I'm the Chief Investigator with Michigan Institute of Forensic Science and Medicine out of Saginaw. We are looking to expand our services, and just wanted to come and introduce myself. We're interested in working with Dr. Wagner. Um, I do have some packets here that I would like to pass out if that's okay, just kind of gives a, a brief summary of what our office offers. We have two forensic pathologists at our office, and we'd just like to work with Dr. Wagner and provide the best service for Midland.
Sure, you can pass them out. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Jack Guerman, and I lived in Midland County all my life. I'll be very brief, I just wanted to add a couple things that are being disrupted besides, uh, ORV-ing and hunting. Uh, there's fishing, uh, there's horseback riding trails, and, uh, there's property values. I think that's very important to be considered, property values for a massive area. I just wanted to add them in addition to what everybody else had brought in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, please come forward, name and address.
My name is Constance Service, I live here in Midland, but I also have a cabin up north in Levels, Michigan, which is 20 miles east of Grayling. It has a beautiful, the Asabo River that runs through it, it has beautiful lake up there that is spring water fed and clear, and I used to be able to trail ride, but, and there's this other beautiful lake called Lonesome Lake, it is shut off to us, that I used to camp at when I was a kid. We have no access to it now because of their, expanding their lands. We do not want the expansions anymore because it's tearing up our roads. County Road 612 is awful to drive through, and that's what we see their vehicles on all the time when they're doing their testings there. We hear the shooting of their cannons and guns, and they've, they just recently had a forest fire up there because of military. Um, we just do not want this expansion to go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other public comment? Bill? I think I want to say something under public comment, and, uh, so, I, excuse my seat, right? Steve, you can take it from me now.
Move with your feet.
Steve is now the chairman and the non-chairman's seat.
Not yet. My name is Mark Bone, Midland County. Hey, at first, when we, uh, when I took this up, or we agreed to hear this presentation, I thought, hey, we're not going to vote on something like this today, and I can't put it on the agenda now, but I feel strongly about, opposed to this expansion, and I'd love to see us vote on it today, but it would take a motion from one of you commissioners to bring this item up for business too. So, um, I can't put it on the agenda, I would change my mind and put it on. Um, the governor could make the decision at any point, and I want us to be behind, or saying no, that's my personal opinion, and not waiting a couple more weeks to act on it. So, up to you guys. But... Now, let's start with our standing committee reports. Denise, can you read committee report number one, please?
Dated April 14th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your administration and operations committee recommend approval of the request to adopt the high-hazard dam appendix to the currently adopted 2018 Midland County Hazard Mitigation Plan. We further recommend that Chairman Bone be authorized to sign a letter on behalf of the board indicating the adoption of this appendix to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette M. Snyder, Chairperson James Geisler, Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee.
Commissioner Snyder.
Um, Chairman Bone, the A&amp;O Committee recommends 1-1-19, and Jennifer and Dave Rothman are here. I'd ask if maybe one of you could just come up and brief us just a one to two minutes on what this is. Thank you so much.
Morning, everyone. I'm Dave Rothman, I'm Vice President of Fort Lake's Task Force. Uh, some, a couple of years ago, FEMA advised us of a high-hazard potential dam rehabilitation grant program that FEMA is running. It's a fairly new program. We've applied for grants under that program twice and been, uh, granted, uh, money under that program totaling $1.1 million in, in two separate grants. One of the requirements of the FEMA grant program ties into a general objective I believe FEMA has for hazard mitigation plans nationwide, and that is that jurisdictions that have a high-hazard potential dam within their jurisdiction, and Midland does, uh, those jurisdictions will need to include a section in their new hazard mitigation plans that address all dam hazards. Uh, there are very few documents like this that have been written. I've asked for examples from FEMA, never received one. This will, this document that you have, um, for addition to the current Midland County plan, that will be the first one that's been written in Michigan to my knowledge. But it's a requirement to have this in an approved, uh, hazard mitigation plan in Midland County for Fort Lake's Task Force to be able to actually receive reimbursement under the grant program that we've been awarded. So I'm asking for your help to get this into the current Midland County plan. This document that I, that I wrote and passed to Jennifer, and she has shared with you, is the basis for the chapter I've drafted for the next Midland County plan that will address the same topic, and for the next Blavlin County plan, which also needs to address the same topic. So it's the beginning of a, a move within the state of Michigan to put hazard mitigation-related information on high-hazard potential dams into the hazard mitigation plans that are written and approved. This would, this document would normally not, wouldn't be put into an appendix to amend an existing plan so late in its life cycle. This current plan expires in January of 2024, but FEMA has granted that they will agree to have us added into the current Midland County plan. FEMA's already reviewed the document that's been passed out to you, and they agree that it checks off all the boxes that are required for a, an all-dam hazards, uh, plan for Midland County. And, um, when the new Midland County plan is put together, I will be involved putting a, a chapter in, it will be shorter than this one, to, uh, address all dam hazards again in the next Midland County plan. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks for the info, Dave. Very much.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner discussion? Jennifer?
I could, real quick, so there's two things I'm asking for from the board for the letter, is a communication to FEMA that you guys are accepting this, and then also the adoption of the new appendix. So those are two key things that we'll need for FEMA.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Jen. Thank you. Any other discussion? Denise Coverall, please.
Commissioners Tewiliger? Yes. Geisler? Yes. Dorian? Yes. Smith? Snyder? Yes. Glazer? Yes. Chairman Bone? Yes. Six yeas, one absent, motion carried.
Committee report number two, please.
Dated April 14th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your administration and operations committee recommend approval of the affiliation agreement with Central Michigan University for the provision of educational employment opportunities at Midland County Mosquito Control. The term of this agreement is for the period of March 31st, 2023 through March 30th, 2030. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette M. Snyder, Chairperson James Geisler, Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee.
Commissioner Snyder.
Mr. Chairman, the Administration and Operations Committee recommends approval of 29-4-23.
Is there any commissioner discussion? Yes, Commissioners Twiliger?
Yes, just a quick question on that, is the intention for, um, this to be working out in the field, or is it going to be working with our biologist? Um, so how, this is sort of an internship?
Bridgette? This is an internship, and the primary focus will be working with GIS.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other commissioner discussion? Denise Coverall, please.
Commissioners Geisler? Yes. Dorian? Yes. Smith? Snyder? Yes. Glazer? Yes. Commissioner Bond? Yes. Six yeas, one absent, motion carried.
Committee report number three, please.
Dated April 14th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your administration and operations committee recommend approval of the memorandum of understanding with Mid-Michigan Community Action Agency Incorporated regarding services and referrals to the early childhood services program. The term of this agreement is effective upon signature through July 31st, 2025. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette M. Snyder, Chairperson James Geisler, Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee.
Commissioner Snyder.
Mr. Chairman, the Administration and Operations Committee recommends 31-4-23.
Any commissioner discussion? Denise Coverall, please.
Commissioners Dorian? Yes. Smith? Snyder? Yes. Glazer? Yes. Tewiliger? Yes. Geisler? Yes. Chairman Bone? Yes. Six yeas, one absent, motion carried.
Committee report number four, please.
Dated April 14th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your administration and operations committee and the finance committee have reviewed the grant administration agreement between the County of Midland and the Midland Area Community Foundation. The term of this agreement is from August 15th, 2023 through January 15th, 2024. Under the agreement, the foundation will administer a grant program utilizing $1,400,000 of the county's American Rescue Plan Act funds to assist nonprofit corporations struggling to perform their mission as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. The proposal is for the county to make two payments of $700,000 each, one in 2023 and a second in 2024. We recommend approval of this agreement and that the administrator controller be authorized to make any necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette M. Snyder, Chairperson James Geisler, Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee, Eric Dorian, Chairperson Steve Glazer, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Snyder.
Mr. Chairman, the A&amp;O, uh, committee recommend 30-4-23.
And Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chair, the finance committee also recommends adoption of Agenda Item 30-4-23.
Is there any commissioner discussion?
If, if we could have Sharon come up and...
Perfect, thank you.
I would assume...
I couldn't see you, I thought you had to... I was waiting for... Good morning, Sharon Mortenson from Midland Area Community Foundation, and, um, yeah, we're pleased to provide this service again to the county. I know we, we also did this last year, we distributed, um, $600,000 in ARPA grant funds to nonprofits, and those really address some basic needs in our community, um, food, we worked with the Bridge Food Center with a grant there, um, we also provided home to stay to help with housing, um, childcare through the Midland County Educational Service Agency, the Alice Population through United Way of Midland County, and then mental health through three different organizations working on different aspects. The Great Lakes Bay Foundation with some of the work they're doing through the Mental Health Partnership, Creative 360 and Breaking Bread Village. So we were pleased to provide that service, and we would again follow a similar format and make this known once approved by you to nonprofits throughout the county so they have the opportunity to apply for this.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon.
Any questions? Denise Coverall, please.
Commissioners Snyder? Yes. Glazer? Yes. Tewiliger? Yes. Geisler? Yes. Dorian? Yes. Chairman Bone? Yes. Six yeas, one absent, motion carried.
Committee report number five, please.
Dated April 14th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your administration and operations committee and the Human Services Committee have reviewed and recommend approval of the request to change the name of the detention and monarch academy facility name to Midland County Juvenile Justice Center, and the title of youth development worker to juvenile specialist. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette M. Snyder, Chairperson James Geisler, Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee, Gaye Tewiliger, Chairperson Jeanette M. Snyder, Human Services Committee.
Commissioner Snyder.
Mr. Chairman, Administration and Operations Committee recommends 28-4-23, and Ryan and Corey are here if they would like to come up and say a few words. Judge Allen had to leave.
Yep, yep. Thank you, guys, hold on just one second if you don't mind, I'm sorry, Commissioner Twiliger, I also need your support.
Hi, Ryan, just a minute. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Human Services recommends adoption of Agenda Item 28-4-23. Okay, now you can come up.
Thank you, thank you. You're on, guys.
Jessica, can you set that two-minute timer? I'll be brief, because many of you have heard me go on and on about this topic.
Can you state your names for...
Oh, yeah, Ryan Griffiths, Director of the Juvenile Care Center, with me.
Corey Gillespie, Assistant Director of Juvenile Care Center.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you all about this. Uh, it's been 25 years that we've held the same name for both our building and for our staff titles, but in those 25 years, the landscape of juvenile justice has changed tremendously. Um, so we bring some proposals to you, uh, this morning with, with many objectives, and the first and foremost is to recognize and to acknowledge that with this, we are representing, uh, the court, we're representing the county, the citizens of this county, we're representing you all, so I appreciate, um, again, the opportunity to bring these proposals to you. The building title change is, is multifaceted, but the primary driver for this is the fact that we are an arm of the court, we're under the court's umbrella, and when a youth is court-ordered, or a family is court-ordered to our facility to participate in programming and undertake efforts toward rehabilitation, um, that's a form of the court's justice, and we undertake those efforts and we try to carry out those, those, uh, orders, essentially providing justice to the surrounding community and for our county, the community, our county youth, the communities that they will essentially return to. And so really by changing the title for the building, we want to reaffirm for all of our stakeholders that we are essentially, regardless of our geographical proximity, we are the court, and so when you enter in there, there's a seriousness about it, we want to, you know, really make those changes with you and uphold that court's justice, and again, provide justice to the community. Uh, the second, the, well, and I'll, and I'll speak very briefly also about the, the essence of clarification for folks who visit our center or are interested in supporting our efforts. Um, we've had a lot of folks come and, and ask us about our daycare rates, um, because the Juvenile Care Center often inflicts a little bit of confusion as far as what goes on in that building. And so we really want to make that clear, and, and again, for people who are unaware, we are representatives of the justice system. Uh, the second proposal that we bring as far as the job title, uh, changes has a lot to do with, and, and folks, I really can't emphasize this enough, uh, the staff that are within our facility, I, it's just a special group. I've been affiliated with the Juvenile Care Center since 2004 in some form or fashion, I placed many, many youth in that facility over that time. It's different, it's different than any other facility in the state of Michigan, and I stand very firm in that affirmation because when kids go into that facility, and that's speaking present day as well, they come out different, um, and hopefully that, that difference sustains over time, but I'm really proud of what our staff undertake there. They've had to deal with a ever-changing landscape of needs as far as youth and families and trends of mental health, substance abuse... of needs as far as youth and families and trends of mental health, substance abuse, post-COVID mental health crisis, all the things that kids are experiencing these days. And they're doing wonderfully with it. They're doing that through being specialized in trauma-informed and trauma evidence-based programming, substance abuse programming, you name it. They've had training in it and they're specializing in it. So our youth are receiving exceptional services. And I really, with the job title change, want to provide credence and credibility to what they do on a daily basis. I'm going to allow, Corey's been there for 25 years and he is an excellent representative of changing with those times and really evolving to the needs of youth and families. So I'll allow Corey to state his...
Our building has continued to change and meet the needs of the community. It's changed as the youth change, the age of the youth change, the, what brings them into the court system has changed over time. All the specializations of our staff have changed. The only things that really haven't come up has been the names at this point, so.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Ryan. Thanks, Corey.
Thank you. And thank you all very much for your support and your investment and time and learning about that. I know that the tour recently, we had great attendance. We really appreciate that. That says a lot about the leadership that we were very proud to serve.
Sorry I missed it.
We got more opportunities. We're finding us. Thank you all.
Thanks. Denise, will you call roll, please?
Commissioners Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Terwilliger.
Yes.
Geisler. Dorian.
Yes. Yes.
Smith. Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, motion carried.
Committee report number six, please.
Dated April 14th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we your finance committee have reviewed the request to approve the Drain Commissioner's Plan to issue bonds in the amount of $1,692,000. Finance a drainage project on the Mount Haley Number 15 Drain and recommend the approval of the request from the Drain Commissioner that the Board of Commissioners irrevocably pledge the limited full faith and credit of the County of Midland to back this project. Respectfully submitted, Eric Dorian, Chairperson, Steve Glazer, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chair, the finance committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 26-3-23.
Do we have any commissioner discussion? Denise Coverall, please.
Commissioners Glazer.
Yes.
Terwilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith. Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, motion carries.
Committee report number seven, please.
Dated April 14th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we your finance committee have reviewed the 2024 budget calendar as recommended by the Finance Director. The proposed calendar complies with MCL 141.422. As amended, the state law regulating budgets for local units of governments and is in accordance with Policy Number 304.1, County Budget Policy, which was approved on September 6th, 2016. The Finance Committee recommends approval of the following budget calendar for the 2024 budget process. June 2023, elected officials, department heads, subject, submit budget requests to the Administrator Controller. September 12th, 2023, Administrator Controller recommended budget is assembled and transmitted to elected officials, department heads, and the Board of Commissioners. November 7th, 2023, Board of Commissioners adopt General Appropriations Resolution and Budget. Respectfully submitted, Eric Dorian, Chairperson, Steve Glazer, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 27-4-23.
Do we have any commissioner discussion? Denise Coverall, please.
Commissioners Glazer.
Yes.
Terwilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith. Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, motion carries.
Committee report number eight, please.
Dated April 14th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we your finance committee recommend approval of the 2023 State Tax Commission Report of County Equalized Value, Form L 4024. This report is in accordance with MCL 209.5 and 211.34 and should be submitted to the state prior to May 2nd, 2023. Respectfully submitted, Eric Dorian, Chairperson, Steve Glazer, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 32-4-23.
Do we have any commissioner discussion? Denise Coverall, please.
Chris is here.
Okay.
In the equalization department, if you'd like to just give a background. I know this is very standard business for us, but for the rest of the public.
Good morning. The report is basically the summation of the work of the assessors and the equalization department for the whole year. It is the representation of the values that we have established showing the state that we have met the requirements of 49% to 50% of assessed values. It's a simple, straightforward, just compiling of the numbers. Equalization assessment is a passion of mine. I could stand here for another four hours and talk to you on that, but I'll save you that problem. If anybody has any questions, I can answer them.
Appreciate it, Chris.
Thank you.
Denise Coverall, please.
Commissioners Terwilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith. Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, motion carries.
Committee report number nine, please.
Dated April 14th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we your Human Services Committee have carefully reviewed the credentials for the new Finance Director and the subsequent request to hire the candidate above the starting salary rate. We recommend setting the salary for incoming Finance Director at grade 15 Step 2. Respectfully submitted, Gay Terwilliger, Chairperson, Jeanette M. Snyder, Human Services Committee.
Commissioner Twilliger.
Mr. Chairman, Human Services is pleased to recommend approval of Agenda Item 33-4-23.
Do we have any commissioner discussion? Denise Coverall, please.
Commissioners Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith. Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Terwilliger.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, motion carries.
Okay, that is it for our standing committee reports. We have no RPCs. We have no old business. As of now, I would need a motion to either take up four items of new business as previously planned, or if somebody would like to take up five items and add the other one, feel free to make that motion.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make the motion to take up five items of new business and add the opposing resolution of Camp Grayling expansion.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. So on the first four items, we are going to, we are going to just take a voice vote here. If all in favor, I. But on the fifth item, I think we'll have Denise Coverall on that. So go ahead and start with item number one, if you don't mind, Denise.
Dated April 12th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, I recommend approval of the attached proclamation declaring the month of April 2023 as National County Government Month. Respectfully submitted, Steve Glazer, District Number 3, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Glazer. We just need you to support two of them.
Okay. Yes, I support.
34-4-23.
That one.
Okay. Thank you very much. There we go. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, the same. Okay, we approve that and we're going to move on to, just fair warning, moving on to item number two.
All right, so see if I can get this right. Mr. Chairman.
Denise read it first, please.
Dated April 12th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, I recommend approval of the attached proclamation declaring the month of May 2023 is Neurofibromatosis Awareness Month. Respectfully submitted, Steve Glazer, District Number 3, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Glazer.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that Agenda Item 35-4-23.
Thank you. Any commissioner discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will approve item number two and move on to item number three.
Dated April 14th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, I recommend the appointment of Mr. James Peck to the Region 7 Area Agency on Aging AAA Advisory Council as a Midland County Representative. Mr. Peck will fill the vacancy created due to the resignation of Christopher Lochner and his term will be effective April 14th, 2023 through March 31st, 2025. Additionally, I recommend the appointment of Mr. Jeff Malakot to the Region 7 Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors. This appointment is for a three-year term beginning April 1st, 2023 through March 31st, 2026. Respectfully submitted, Steve Glazer, District 3, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Glazer.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend approval of Agenda Item Number 36-4-23. And I believe we have someone that would like to address the board on that.
This is James Peck.
This is James.
Okay, yes, please go forward and...
Address the board.
Hi, Jim.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I'd like to, thank you for letting me come up here and make this presentation. I, I'm sitting in here in the back. I know I don't like to complain, but half the tough that I'm trying to hear, I cannot hear. I don't know if there's a way we can resolve this or not, but I would appreciate it if we could. And I'm sure other members of the committee back here would also. But anyway, my name is James Peck and I've been in this area, Midland County area now for the past 16, 17 years. I married a lady, has been on the planning commission and Mount Haley Township. And I've, I've been asked to do Meals on Wheels and I volunteered for that. And I enjoy it. And there is, you'd be surprised of people that would appreciate these meals.
Sure.
And I would like to be on the board to see if I can do anything better of the situation that we do have in this county. And I also do it in another county. So I'm doing two counties delivering meals. I enjoy it and I enjoy the people and you'd be heartening of what's above go through. I appreciate your recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any commissioner discussion?
Just want to, I'd just like to thank James and Jeff for raising their hand and being involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will approve item number three and thank you for your service vote for you and move to report number four.
Dated April 14th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, I recommend approval of the updated letter of interest regarding the Titibowasi River Watershed Flood Risk Management Study in partnership with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. I further recommend that Chairman Bone be authorized to sign this letter on behalf of the board. Respectfully submitted, Steve Glazer, District Number 3, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Glazer.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend approval of Agenda Item 37-4-23.
Do we have any commissioner discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we'll approve number four and move on to new business item number five now. Do, oh, I thought you got the resolution.
No. Is Jessica working on that right now?
What's... Thought we had the resolution ready.
I don't think it's in here.
On a quick timeout, Commissioner Twilliger.
Yeah. Is it possible for me to just make some commentary on this particular item?
We are going to have commissioner comments.
Okay.
So you can do it in commissioner comments.
Well, I'm just trying to, we're killing time right now, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just have to remark that I'm feeling the vapors, the pressure of all of this with these announcements. But, you know, working, crafting all of those other resolutions, I just ran out of time getting this one done, so.
There we go. Well, kind of dropped a bottle on you there.
Yes.
We're just taking a couple of minute break, everybody, before we vote.
She's going to make a formal one. So there's no confusion.
Yeah. Does anyone know any good dad jokes?
No. I do have a question.
That's because none of them are good.
Oh, I do have a question. They talk about the number of acres. For me, that doesn't compute very well. Does anybody have the numbers for the number of square miles? It's much easier.
I bet you he does.
Over double in the property.
147,000 acres is about 231 square miles.
231 square miles.
And 140, I'm sorry, 163, 163,000 acres is about 251 square miles. I have an MBA, but I don't have one of, I don't have an M. This is a math. That's pretty close, sir.
It's fine. Thank you. Yep. Thank you.
Okay, will you read item number five of new business, please, Denise?
Dated April 18th, 2023, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, I recommend approval of the attached resolution opposing the Camp Grayling expansion. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, District Number 1, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Snyder.
Mr. Chair, I recommend number five, whatever that number is, opposing Camp Grayling expansion resolution.
So at this point, just so everybody's clear, I think we are, a yes vote at this point says we oppose it. So just to keep...
We oppose...
The expansion.
Approving.
Yes. So if you vote yes, it means no. I just want to make sure everybody, everybody understands that. So Denise, will you call, unless there's any discussion, Commissioner Twilliger?
Well, I was opposed to this already, but this is a personal thing because my husband's family has been hunting and also fishing in that area right around Grayling for what? I don't want to say how old we are, but we're old. So anyway, it's a personal thing. So this is for my husband and our family.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chairman, I've tried to communicate this in the past, probably not very effectively, but I do really oppose these measures where we're involving ourselves in business that we shouldn't be. So I am no longer supporting any more resolutions that come before this board. And I don't care how charitable the mission is or how good it is or how bad it is. It's just not going to happen with me.
Fair enough.
That's fair.
Fair enough. Any other commissioner discussion?
We may have to do a voice.
Yeah, we're going to, yep.
Or the individual.
Yep. So if we're done with commissioner discussion, Denise, would you call roll, please?
Commissioners Dorian.
I abstain.
Smith, Snyder.
Yes.
You've got to, can you abstain? You've got to have a camp, is that right, Counselor? Because he's got to have a conflict of interest, right?
Either you're not here or you must be... Last time I do this. Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Terwilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes, 100%. Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, motion carries.
Okay, that's great. We are now going to move on to commissioner comments and start with Commissioner Snyder.
So it was good, full meeting, and I appreciate people coming and speaking to us and informing us of your opinions and thoughts. It's all very helpful. And I appreciate the volunteers stepping up with the Region 7 and these important positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glazer.
Yes, I thank you for the presentation, all the people who came here in support of it. And also, thank you for the volunteers, again, calling in line with Jessica here. For these agencies to work, we need people involved to input their time and their energy. And we really appreciate the work, Yvonne, that you've done and look forward to working with our new folks. So thank you.
Commissioner Twilliger.
Yes, I'm going to reiterate, thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Jim. There you are, for stepping forward. Jim, remember, I was at the Mount Haley meeting last night. I live in Angersaw, so I'm District 4. I'm your commissioner. I'm here for, to assist your processes and I plan to continue to go to meetings and that's one of my appointments. So stay in communication with me. Thank you. And I am glad to have had the opportunity to speak on that topic. It's a big deal. Thank you.
Commissioner Geisler.
This is commissioner's comments, correct?
Correct.
My son, J.D. Geisler, will be initiating the SoBoks Derby Corporation for the County of Midland.
Thank you, Mr. Geisler. Mr. Dorian.
I also want to echo the comments of the previous commissioners with regards to the presentation today. Thanks, Mike, for coming. Thanks for all those who are taking part in attendance at today's meeting. Thank you, Yvonne, for all your years of service. Thanks, Jim and Jeff, for stepping up and serving our senior community. That's all I've got
That's all I've got today. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank the volunteers and, or for stepping up, and, Yvonne, for all your years of service. Very much appreciated. Then I guess I'd just like to say, we've done this for a long time. I've made a lot, you know, we make a lot of votes, and sometimes some of them seem like just a pretty normal vote, but today I was proud to be able to vote and oppose this new business number five in support of this resolution, so some, they're all important votes, but sometimes you feel the value of your position when you can basically stand up for your constituents and the people of your state of Michigan. So it was a proud vote for me, and obviously I'm opposed, and so too it. So that's all I have, and thanks again, everybody. Let's go to committee meeting schedules and start with Commissioner Snyder.
Alrighty, are we going up until the second? That's our next board meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So it's spring, so on the nineteenth, evening of the nineteenth, I have Wixson Lake Improvement Board Meeting up in Billings Township, and then following that, on the twentieth, I have the Sanford Lake Improvement Board Meeting. Those are determine what to do with tax dollars for the lake, the impoundment. And the twenty-fifth, A and O will meet at two-thirty at the City of Coleman that evening at seven o'clock. The twenty-seventh, at nine AM, I have the Road Commission, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Blazer.
Yes, sir. Tomorrow, the nineteenth, I have Midstate Health Network Substance Use Policy Oversight, Oversight Policy Board in Lansing at four o'clock, Homer Township at seven o'clock, so a twofer. And the twenty-fifth, Tuesday, Community Mental Health of Central Michigan, both the Finance Committees and the Board of Directors meetings, five o'clock for Finance and six-thirty for Board of Directors, Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, and then Thursday, the twenty-seventh, Mid Michigan Community Action in Farwell at four-thirty, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Commissioner Blazer. Let's see. Commissioner Geisler, or Commissioner Twiliger, excuse me.
Yes, on April twentieth, I have Recovery Corps immediately followed by Pine Crush and also the Department of Health and Human Services meeting on Thursday. On Friday, April twenty-one, Bridget, I have a Community Corrections Advisory Board meeting. Is that legit? It's a Zoom. Okay, but we don't usually have Friday meetings, so I thank you for the confirmation. I have that, and I'm sure that is just for approval of budgets for our two thousand and twenty-four, sending in for our grant to DOC. And also, that is the Dare Spaghetti Dinner at Messiah Lutheran, so I will be attending that, and I just also, more importantly, just wanted to announce that's the Dare Spaghetti Dinner Night, starts at five, for you all to make your contributions for Dare, and then also on April twenty-fifth, Human Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Geisler.
I will have a meeting with Michigan Works yet this month. The exact time and date has not been given to me from Sarah Babcock yet, but I'm sure it will be coming.